All the meeting to order. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone please rise and join us in the pledge. Pledge allegiance?
To the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you all for joining us for our county commissioner meeting this evening. Between now and our next county commissioner meeting, our community here in Asheville and Buncombe County and in North Carolina and our country will be celebrating the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, which is recognized on Monday, January 21st. This day has been set aside by the state of North Carolina and the United States Congress to recognize the man who changed our country. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. dedicated his life to tearing down walls of segregation and to the advancement of equal rights for all. He helped America become a better nation by confronting our country's legacy of slavery and discrimination. He carried out his work not by appeals to anger or calls for revenge, but through an unwavering commitment to reconciliation, peace, and nonviolence, all of which were inspired by his deep Christian faith. Before we begin our meeting this evening, let us have a moment of silence for prayer and reflection on the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and of all the men and women in our country who have fought for and sacrificed the advancement of equality and justice for all. Please join us in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. We've got a couple of announcements. I want to announce that for any folks who are attending the county commission meeting this evening, who use the county parking facilities or public transportation to come to the meeting, you can get validation for your parking or transit from the officers who are here at the meeting this evening. So we want to make it easy for folks to travel to the meeting and attend the meeting, so please feel free to talk to them about getting validation for parking or transit. I want to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, and to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? And does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on all matters voted on by the county commission this evening. Okay, we now come to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published with the addition of potential consideration of a legal settlement, which will take up after the East Haven Apartments presentation?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great. All right, and we come to the East Haven Apartments presentation, and we have several folks from Mountain Housing Opportunities who are here with us this evening to talk about this project and where things are at in the planning process. And there is a financial request to the county as part of this, so we're gonna hear the presentation tonight, and we'll have a chance to have some discussion about it and discuss the next steps after that.
Great, thank you so much Chairman Newman, and I hope I can operate the technology correctly tonight. I am Cindy Weeks with Mountain Housing Opportunities, and I thank you for allowing us to speak to you tonight about East Haven Apartments, which is a 95-unit apartment complex at Mountain Housing Opportunities, which is to construct in Swananoa. And this evening, we are making our formal request for $2.2 million as a loan to this project to complement the $14.6 million that we've already raised for the project. Total cost are $16.8 million. This loan that we're requesting tonight would be a lien against the property, similarly to all the large financial investments that the county has made in our other projects, notably Larchmont Apartments, Eagle Marketplace, and Glen Rock. And the loan terms are varying for those. Generally, they're a deferred loan with an interest rate of 2% that, at the end of 20 years, becomes due. So with that, yay, it worked. East Haven is located on Highway 70, right near the Ingalls supermarket. It's close to the Beacon site, there's a lot of services out there, a post office, CVS Pharmacy, a mission outpatient facility, and schools. There'll be a bus stop for the city bus line that runs between Black Mountain and Asheville, right in front of our complex. It's actually already laid out and built. Employers nearby are the Ingalls Warehouse and numerous state facilities in that area, and recently funded Avidem Technologies that you guys incentivized, I think, a year or two ago. I'm not sure if their facility is completely constructed yet, but I understand they're gonna have 500 jobs at various levels of income out there. And it's interesting that in all over Buncombe County, there's been a lot of affordable housing constructed, except in the Swananoa Valley. And the last permanently affordable rental housing that was constructed in the Swananoa Valley was Blue Ridge Apartments on Blue Ridge Road, right outside of Black Mountain. Those are senior apartments only. And then prior to that was the Genesis Apartments in the town of Black Mountain, up off of Norfolk Road, and that's a family complex, and that was constructed by the Sobel family in 1980. So it's been over 36 years since any permanently affordable rental housing has been built in the valley. This is our timeline, just to go over this. We started planning this in 2014, and we kicked it off with a charrette, both with the Buncombe County planning staff and the friends and neighbors of Swananoa, the fans group out there. We held it at the Grovemont Buncombe County Library, and it was a really big success. We went through and tried to figure out what kind of complex we wanted to build, what kind of needs were in Swananoa Valley, and did a really good job there. And in 2015, I think we applied for tax credits that year, and we were turned down. But at that same time, Buncombe County was planning the new zoning ordinance, which is community-oriented development, which was really planned for incentivizing a higher density of affordable housing along major roadways that had water and sewer. So our site was a good site to do that. So we met with planning staff and talked about that, and East Haven was actually the first, I think it's still the only, development complex that was approved under the community-oriented development. And through that, those different criteria, we were able to increase from 60 units to 95 units, so that was a game changer for us. So in 2017, we applied for tax credits again, and we were awarded credits. And in 2018, we raised some additional funds that we needed to complete our financing package, most notably $1.35 million through the state ISHP program, which is a special needs housing program. And then we have a federal home loan bank award of $500,000, and that's a very competitive grant. So if you look in the green area at the bottom, if we can have these funds approved of 2.2 million, and I don't know if it's gonna be approved today or at the next meeting, but either way, we'd like to start, we can start construction in March of this year. And we have all of our other funds committed, tax credits, everything. And that means that we can begin taking applications in July of 2020, finish our construction in September, and have people move in in October. This is a summary of the units that we're building, the size and the rent rates. If you look at, in the little blue chart, we're building 31 one-bedroom units, 47 two-bedroom, and 17 three-bedroom. The square footages are listed there, as well as the rents. The rents come at three levels. We have rents for people that are 30% of area median income and below. We have rents for people that are 50% of AMI and below, and at 60. Either way, almost every job in Buncombe County that is a labor-type job, where people are just working in the community, they will be able to live at East Haven. They'll be income-eligible. We did a little research on the jobs in the Swananoa Valley, and there are actually over 9,000 jobs located within four miles of our East Haven site. And of these 9,000 jobs, almost 6,000 of the individuals holding those jobs will qualify for an apartment at East Haven. And of all those jobs, over 2,000, the folks are making less than $15,000 a year, and then another, almost 4,000, are making between $15,000 a year and about $36,000 a year. We're also gonna reserve 10 units at East Haven for veterans. And finally, this is my last slide. In meeting with the commissioners, and especially with Commissioner Belcher, we had some really, I think, detailed discussions about the fact that it would be great to have a lot of these residents that are renting move into homeownership. And in fact, MHL has been doing this for our entire 30-year existence. Our very first rental complex we built in Haw Creek, it was only 10 units, and we started a homeownership program there. We matched folks' savings, and they saved and moved out into homes on their own. But we're doing this at all of our apartment complexes throughout the county. Some of you know, Mountain Housing Opportunities has this self-help housing program where the residents actually build their homes themselves, and a lot of the folks that go into that program are former tenants at our apartment complexes. We've already constructed 15 self-help houses in Black Mountain and another 14 in Swananoa. And just last week, we got an option on a property less than two miles from the East Haven site where we could build another 16 homes for homeownership. So we're kind of excited about that, because as we put together this path to equity program that would not just serve our residents at East Haven, but also residents of the entire Swananoa Valley, there will be actual opportunities for them to build and purchase a home. So that concludes my presentation. We're very appreciative of the Board of Commissioners. We've been working with you all and your predecessors for over 30 years now, and been very grateful to receive a lot of funding for our various programs over those years, and want to continue our collaboration with you, with East Haven, in providing these 95 homes to folks in the Swananoa Valley. So with that, I can answer any questions or any comments.
Okay, thank you Cindy. Are there any questions from commissioners at this time?
I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
In the past, the loans that have been done have been, they have been deferred, is that correct?
Yes.
So they've been loan payments at the end.
Yes.
Are y'all opposed to looking at other ways to structure these? I don't expect that this one will be the last one that we discuss in Buncombe County, because this...
Let me turn this on, sorry.
Yeah.
That's better?
Thank you, yes.
I don't think this will be the last one that we discuss in Buncombe County, because the need is great. I do believe that people need, you know, a path to independence for those that choose it, and homeownership is a way to do that. I don't think that anything that we build or we support should, that people should be, believe that they have to be held to staying there, living there, you know, their entire life. If they aspire to stay there, that's fine. If they want to move, or they want to grow, or, I think there should be programs available to them. And I think that if it's your, if it's your community complex or whatever, then I think y'all should and could be a vital part of making sure that they are connected to people that can teach them and help them understand what it could be to become a homeowner.
Yes.
Should they choose to choose that path. I think that education needs to be available, that these should not just be built and 50, 60, 90 people and families move into them, and then they believe that that's where they will spend the rest of their lives. If they choose to do that, that's great. But if not, I think they need a path of, as you said, a path of equity or independence, a way to be able to do that. And I'm more supportive of things that come to the commission that do that. And so, but I also wanted to ask if y'all would entertain other ways to structure these. Just because we've done them in the past a certain way doesn't mean that we need to do that going forward.
Absolutely. On this one, the way our pro forma is working right now, this would need to be like the one you did at Eagle Market, where it was structured at a 2% accruing interest loan, but no payments of principal interest for that first 20 years. We just don't have the cash flow on this, because when we acquired the ISHP funds from the state and also the federal home loan bank, we had to actually lower our rents on the complex. So it's a good thing in that we're gonna be serving a lot more lower-income people, but it doesn't generate enough cash flow to make a payment on that loan. But I agree with you, I think in the future, if, when the county is working with us or any other tax credit developer, we should come in on the front end and start planning. There's not really, right now, a lot of policies or procedures for putting these loans into place, but we'd be happy to discuss that in the future. And going back to your comments, Commissioner Belcher, about this effort at the path to equity, even though MHL, 30 years ago, we did put in place a very active, we even ran a homeownership program in our own organization. Since then, we've worked with On Track Financial Counseling to work with us on that. But what we're gonna be doing differently at East Haven is we're gonna actually hold quarterly meetings for our residents and members of the community on an ongoing basis to make these available. So it's not gonna be just referring them over to On Track, but actually bringing these services to the Swananoa Valley.
I may have another question or two, but I'll stop now and allow my colleagues to ask theirs, so. Plus, I need to give my voice a break, man.
Okay. Are there any other questions or suggestions from the board about next steps?
I have a quick question. I'm very pleased to see that you are holding 10 spaces for our veterans. What is your plan to locate those veterans for the available units?
Yes, well, we work with all the community partners. We work with the Housing Authority, with ABCCM, with actually the VA. We've even had placements directly from the VA when veterans have the VASH vouchers, which is basically a Section 8 voucher for veterans. So we are very welcoming to veterans. We have quite a number of veterans at all of our complexes. We will have no trouble locating them.
Just a quick question. Can you just walk us through in a little bit more detail what happens between when you begin taking applications and then how residents are selected and how that process typically progresses?
Yes. So what we do is usually two or three months in advance of completing the development, we start taking names on a first-come, first-served basis. But frankly, honestly, after this is in the media today, and it was in the newspaper, we'll start getting calls, and we keep track of all those calls. And then when we get closer to completing the development, then our staff and our management staff will call each and every one of those applicants back and set up an interview process for them. They'll fill out the application with them, one-on-one, and work them through the different procedures to get, you know, all their criteria together to get into the complex. At Eagle Market, as you all know, it was very delayed, and one of our first residents, when we called him back to say, he had called, I mean, like, five years before that, and we said we were ready to lease, he said, "I thought you all had forgotten about me." And we said, "No, we don't forget about anybody. We keep this list, and we honor this list."
Thank you.
Going back to Eagle Market Street. Eagle Market Street was a disaster, any way you want to look at it, okay? I said it before you started it, and I said it in the middle of it. But the problem with that is, the city, they did one room with one sewer, with one water, that didn't have basically any lighting and any carpet to give it a CO so that y'all could collect money on that deal. City was five and a half million in the hole. I can see why they did it, because they won't even give us permit or CO if we don't have a sidewalk out front. Well, they had boards out front, and I've got pictures in my office of that whole package. I was one that basically got it to where you didn't get the money until the project was done. I think he finally got you $2 million, but it's still just a loan. I can't see stepping in... How much was Eagle Market Street deal, money-wise?
How much was it to construct it?
Yes.
I think it was $18 million for the residential portion of it.
Total with the tire down and put back up?
Yes.
So, but it, you know, six years it's took, basically, to get that up. And I think he finally got the money. But the one thing I haven't figured out is, we're showing something tonight that went around the corner, that didn't come before our county manager, period. It was brought in here on a whim. I'm looking at something that somebody else brought in, but, you know, George didn't know about it. I got an email from you. But it's, the fact is, you know, you're saying 2.2 million, but it's 20 years before you make any payments, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
Well, that's basically just giving you the money. So, you know, 2%, if we can collect the 2% for the 20 years, then that's something. But not collecting any of it back during that period, that's not anything. And, but I just, you know, hopefully this is just a discussion deal that we can all have a sit around and discuss, but Mr. Wood here, you know, it's all bypassed by him. It all got bypassed by this board, by the man that basically supposedly helped run and runs this county, and I'm not pleased with that. You're standing there doing something that he didn't know was gonna happen, so...
Well, I want to comment on that. Three commissioners asked this organization to come in here tonight and talk to us. So the organization's been planning this project for a number of years, but they went through absolutely the right process to talk to commissioners and ask if the commission would want to discuss it. And we followed that process. So if you're not happy about that, you should take it up with the commissioners who asked them to be here tonight, not with the folks who are talking to us.
Well, the commissioners, that's pretty cool. They leave me out all the time, y'all do. That's fine.
It's the same process for every commissioner, Mike.
No, 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 wait a minute. No, wait a minute. It was on Wednesday, all right? It's put up, there's five or six commissioners to be a part of it, and it's brought in, and, you know, there's supposedly money involved in something, and it's in the midstream of, these are nonprofits, okay? This is a nonprofit. It's not during the period to get money. They are a nonprofit. Come in next year, when the nonprofit money is, they want money. They sit in here the other night, didn't say a word.
If you don't want to support it, that's your choice. But commissioners asked to talk about this project, we're here to talk about it. We have not, no decisions been made yet. That's, we're here to talk as a body tonight about whether we want to take action or not. So that's where we're at. I do, I mean, I would say, I mean, I do think, as I've been thinking about, you know, the project, I do think the, you know, we've identified affordable housing as one of our major strategic priorities. This is kind of an aside from, you know, the specific project we're talking about, but I do, I do think that, and again, it's not just because of this project, but just thinking about our overall investments in housing, you know, we have made some more significant investments in affordable housing over the last few years than I think the commissions have made before, you know, partnering on the Lee Walker Heights project in particular is a, you know, a very significant project. I know some of the folks who are working on the homelessness issues in the community are, you know, there's some projects that are out there that they're gonna want to talk to us about. So, I mean, separate from the discussion tonight, but at some point, I think having some further discussion about how we do as a board wish to, you know, kind of think about these projects and investments going forward is a good idea. But we don't currently have, you know, an affordable housing subcommittee of the county commission in the same way we do for early childhood education. Maybe we should look at that, but...
I appreciate it.
So, you know, there are, I think there are probably ways that we could improve our internal processes, but I just don't want to jump on folks who are just kind of talking to us and, you know, getting our advice on how they can engage with this body at this time. Other thoughts or questions?
You know, I agree. I think the project is an excellent project, but it brings up a good point, just like what we're doing for early childhood, you know, pre-K. We are setting the infrastructure in place to handle that. And when you look at what's needed here in affordable housing, I don't want to see every time somebody comes before us with affordable housing that we have to, how do I say it, jump through so many hoops before the process goes to the staff. You know, we can look at it and do a good job of approving them, because the way I feel now, we're doing a lot of, it's not fair to Mountain Housing or whoever comes before us, because it appears that we're doing this by the seat of our pants. And that's what I don't like, because, you know, we need as a taxpayer, as well as, you know, anybody else. I think we've got to be strategic about doing this, and not saying not to do this, no. But this is a good point in time for us to start to put something in place so that we don't go forward every time it's Mountain Housing or whoever comes in here, we have to go through this. And that's why, what I would say is, let's get with staff, discuss it, and then get back with them at our next meeting.
So I would, I kind of lean towards my colleague, Dwight Sides, on my concerns process here. You know, my concern is, you know, we've got a great need in the county when it comes to affordable housing, affordable homeownership. And, you know, it's difficult to be put in a position to make a decision for anything, you know, overnight unless you've spent some time and really, really looked at it. Doesn't mean you don't support it, just means you gotta have a process to be able to move things forward. And that's why I asked the questions about structure, because this won't be the last one that y'all will be doing.
No.
Won't be the last one that we look at. But there needs to be, there needs to be the right time and the right way to do it. We have, I mean, we have to, we're accountable for that, you know? We have to be able to do that, so. And I've seen a hand or two raised, and I don't think we'll be doing public comment on this tonight, because we're just having a discussion, they could talk about it later. Is that correct?
If we're gonna vote on something, then we would take public comment if we were actually gonna vote on something. If we're gonna not vote on it tonight, but have some process to carry it forward, then I don't, I don't think we'll open it up for general public comment. If there are other comments from Mountain Housing specifically, I think we'd welcome, you know, welcome continued dialogue next, since you were asked to be here.
So you mentioned, Chairman, you mentioned Lee Walker. Where are we at in the, somebody refresh my memory on where we are in the process of funding Lee Walker? How much have we spent? What are we, over the next couple of years or whatever it is? Can you help put that information on the table for us?
You did approve of the $4.2 million for that, and we've had negotiations with the Housing Authority, and we will be upfronting approximately a third of the dollars upfront for allow them to be able to continue the project. And it's still a three-year project, and so we'll pay the first installment in, I believe this year, the money is already budgeted and approved, and that will be a larger portion than a smaller portion, and then the final payment in year three for that project.
So it's, do we know the dollar amount for 2019's budget? A third is 1.4, but I'm... A third is 1.4, but I'm hearing it's more than that.
Any number that I would tell you would be a guess at this point. I'd have to go back and find that.
Okay. But you could get that information for us next time if we continue the discussion.
Absolutely.
You could, you could have that for, for the next meeting?
I will.
I think it'd be good to know what we're investing this year in, in that project.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Bill Oglesby, and I'm the Board of Director. I'm a board member of the North Carolina Housing and Finance Agency. I've been a member on that board for about 16 years. I was a member of this board for four years, from 1970, 1976 to 1980. And you guys are working hard, and I appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Uh, I believe in housing, and I believe in affordable housing. The North Carolina Housing Agency has funded 14 developments for Mountain Housing Opportunities. We've put $7.6 million in tax credits in this county. So, we're a believer in Mountain Housing. We're a believer in what's going on with housing. I agree with you, Chairman, and I agree with you, Mr. Whitesides. You ought to have a committee to move forward and do some planning. I'd be more than happy to serve on that committee, and I could get you some other folks that would serve on that committee. I want to ask a question right now. How many of you folks have actually set foot in a development that's been constructed by Mountain Housing Opportunity? One, two, three, four, five? You need to go, Mr. Preston. It's very impressive. These folks are living their lives very wonderful and harmonious in a nice place, according to their sources of income. You're doing a good thing when you do this. The agency, we work in all 100 counties. We distribute tax credits in all 100 counties. We get 140 applications every year to do tax credits. We can only fund 35. Buncombe County has been very, very fortunate. We did 100, 1,295 tax credits for Lee Walker. So, I appreciate your time. I appreciate you letting me speak this evening. I am for this 150 percent. You need to give this group 2.2 million dollars. Let's get some more housing out in Swanonah where we need it. I have the list here, if you'd like to look at it, where we've put this housing, where we've done credits, just be happy to give it to you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to chime in with a few thoughts. One is, thank you all to the folks from Mountain Housing for this presentation and for the work you're doing on the ground every day. Uh, and, and this is a project that I'm enthusiastic about supporting. I think if the will of the commission is to take some time for discussion and process and vote at our next meeting, certainly understand that. But this is something that I feel like is just so clearly aligned with our affordable housing strategic priority. And, and I also think it would be wonderful, and it's really incumbent upon us to create that process through which community partners would have a clear delineated way to know how to approach staff and commission. And in, and absent us creating that process, um, you know, it, it's going to happen any number of different ways. Um, I also just want to just kind of take a moment because we don't have that process in place, and at the same time, a lot of exciting work is happening around affordable housing at the county level. And I just wanted to take about 30 seconds to sort of walk through that. We, we did pass this strategic priority, it's available on the website, that basically articulate that ensuring comprehensive opportunities for affordable and safe housing as a foundation for healthy and thriving families and neighborhoods would be a priority of the board. Um, and, and some of our work around that is around sort of large projects, whether it was Eagle Market Street, the Lee Walker project, this project if it comes, if, if commission votes to participate as a funder. Um, we, we also supported this, this last year increased budget, increased funding for the housing services program, which is particularly assisting folks with emergency housing repair needs, um, and kind of responding to some of those emergent and acute needs that happen. Um, and, uh, you know, the county had a public work session about affordable housing last spring, a lot of great folks working in the sector. So, I also just want to make sure that we're not overstating this and, and treating this proposal as if it's a satellite that lives outside the box of normal county work and strategic priorities. I feel like it's very, there's a very clear through line, and this presents us with sort of a next opportunity to contemplate a significant investment, and I certainly will be supporting that.
I would like to further state that today I've had a number of calls and texts and emails from folks in the Swanonah area specifically asking for support, expressing their support and excitement for this project. And thank you to Mountain Housing Opportunities for the work that you do, for committing to a permanently affordable housing stock that is well-maintained, the proposed rates are the kind of rates that we should be seeing. I support this project this evening. However, moving forward, I would be very supportive of seeing a process in place so that we can make fair and equitable decisions for all other organizations who are doing this type of work. Thank you for what you do for our community.
Good. Yes, sir.
Uh, yes, I totally support this also, but, uh, I was one commissioner, I think there was four of us that put it on, if I'm not mistaken, right? And I was contacted, and Cindy, I know you'd emailed me, and we didn't get together, so I'm one commissioner you didn't get to talk to, that we would bring this for discussion. And, and that's what I'm hoping today is discussion, and we can put this, I know it's a priority, it is all seven of us' top priority, I think, to speak. But I would like to hear more and then bring this back.
Well, how about, how about this, just kind of, you know, taking in the comments, it sounds like there's definitely interest in seriously considering this. Um, why don't we, um, but it is a significant request. I mean, it's a significant investment. So, why don't we ask that our, um, you know, planning and community development staff review the proposal and schedule this for subsequent commission meeting? Uh, we definitely want to get the staff's input on this. This is not the time or place to, you know, I mean, I think the questions about different structures and things like that are interesting, but obviously, this is not the place where we're going to review your pro forma in detail and, you know, figure out the details of that. But that's, we've got great staff to help with that. So, why don't we ask that we have the staff look at the, um, look at the request, you know, to validate that. I mean, one of the questions I had, you know, as I've talked to Cindy, and she'll vouch for this, I'm like, what can you do to get this number down? I mean, we, you know, we, we have a finite amount of resources, and we want to make sure we are investing them in the most cost-effective way that we can. And so, you know, I've done what I feel like I can as a commissioner to push on that. I mean, I want the project to happen, and I want it to, you know, I want it to be done as cost-effectively as possible. I think we want our staff to look at it as well and make sure that they can also validate that, um, you know, these funds are all needed. There's, um, you know, and that the, that it's a reasonable request to get, to execute on the project. So, would the commission be open to, um, to that suggestion that we bring this back with a full staff, you know, staff report? And then we could, um, you know, act on it once we've reviewed the staff report as a budget amendment if there's support to do that?
Yes.
And I would also suggest, to add to what you said, Brownie, is that we move ahead immediately in setting up a structure to handle these proposals going forward, you know, so that organizations will know how to bring them to the county, how, what we go through and all, and it'll be a lot smoother, you know, than what we're doing. Because it is one of our priorities, and we need to have the structure there.
Well, let's, let's, um, you know, the agenda item tonight is this specific project, I think has raised some good process questions.
Yeah.
Let's don't figure all those, I don't think we have time to figure all those out tonight, but I, I mean, I'm in agreement in whether that's a formal subcommittee or, you know, something short of that. But, I mean, one of the issues is that the timing around, you know, state financing, housing, you know, project decisions, our budget process, these things don't all, they're all on, you know, they're all on their own times, uh, schedule. So, figuring out a process to make sure that we can, you know, be engaged at the point of the process where we want to be and, and have all the information is, it's, it can be a little tricky, but I think, I think you're right, we can do better. So, let's, let's all think about what that, what is the right, uh, way to, um, to, to be more engaged earlier in the process. So, any other questions from the commission or otherwise we'll plan on, on not taking any action tonight, but looking forward to this coming back with a staff report associated with it.
So, yeah, I've got a, a couple of comments. I don't want to miss this opportunity for this to be, for us to be able to improve this process. And so, as much as we could do with looking at how we structure these, um, whatever we think we can accomplish between now and when we look at this, which is, you know, next meeting or meeting after, you know, whatever, um, you know, I think we need to do that. You know, I, I think we should, because if not, you know, I mean, this is, this is a good, this is a good project. It's in a good area. Um, it's just, you know, we're trying to deal with, you know, coming in and asking for 2.2 million, you know? And in the middle of everything else that's going on, and that's, that's, that's kind of...
How about, how about this? I mean, but we also don't want to just, um, you know, create a process around just this one project either, right? So, we need a process that's going to work for the, for the long term. How about this, though, as a suggestion? I mean, um, and why don't we, when the staff come back to us, maybe we could also just get a short presentation on, because there is a process. I mean, there's an internal process that our staff use to review different projects, you know, there's scoring procedures for different projects that, based on meeting the goals the commission set up. So, it's not like there is no process. It's just, we just don't have a subcommittee of the commission to work with the staff. They go through their processes, and then, and then they, and then they come to us.
That's right.
So, if we want to get more involved in that, um, we either, you know, need a subcommittee or need more regular updates from the staff and do it at the full body. So, I think there's a couple of different options, but I don't know if we're going to be able to get all that sorted out, you know, in the next, um, you know, two to four weeks unless there's just agreement, uh, you know? We could talk about that more informally outside...
I mean, we might be able to structure this one different than the others. I don't know what that looks like, but there's no reason why we couldn't, couldn't look at that. You're not going to care as long as you get the money, I wouldn't think. As long as you feel like you can see that you can accomplish your goals, you know, if we just change the structure, it doesn't have to be the way someone asks it. I would say that, you know, if we're going to be the last one in, we, it's probably not a bad idea going forward to be the first one asked, you know? Because we're local, you're reaching out in the state, you're reaching federal, you're doing a really good job on that, but ultimately, you're going to come to us, I think, on every project. Is that pretty much the case?
From here on out, yes.
So, I mean, you know, if we got only 30 minutes, 30 days to deal with the ask, it puts us under a, you know, a lot of pressure to, you know?
Well, but...
Which I'm okay with the pressure, or I wouldn't be in the seat, but, you know, it, it, I mean, if you come in and ask for the money, and I'm, and I'm a supporter of this project, where it's at, and I want to preface what I'm saying with that, not being negative towards the project, just negative towards the process and having to deal with it, you know, a few weeks before, for a deadline. And that, that puts, um, puts stress on the decision that I, that I think could be avoided if the process is improved, so... And, but I think we're looking to do that, is what I'm hearing.
But I don't see where it would be... I'm glad Jerry's not here, I would have heard from him.
Hope he's all right.
I don't think it would be unrealistic to say that we can, you know, hopefully with staff and all, have a decision at our next meeting, which is how many weeks away? Because in, in, you know, the timing for them is critical, too.
If they can put, if they can put it together, and they can, you know, show us that the process is, um, that's what I'm looking for, that we're, we're, we're using the taxpayers' dollars in a proper way, we're investing it according to our priorities, and we're doing it, we're not reacting to their request, you know, we're actually improving our process to be able to meet that goal, then, I mean, if y'all can pull that off, you got the...
You know, we've got three weeks. I think we can have a recommendation back to you on this particular proposal during that time.
Okay.
And what I would shoot for is, we would also have at least a draft of the process we would recommend going forward.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Great.
Good.
I'm good with that.
It's simple, isn't it?
Yeah.
That's what we need.
Not moving on anything, are we?
Do what?
We have to...
We didn't, no, no, I don't think we're making, I don't think we're making any decision tonight, we're just having discussion, and...
Good way to end it, over there.
So, all right, well, that sounds good. The, I mean, just in terms of thinking about the, the process issue, I mean, I don't think we, we need or should have county commission subcommittees for every single different issue this commission deals with. The question in my mind, and honestly, I don't think I've, like, come down strongly on one side or the other, but, you know, but when something is elevated to a high enough level of commission interest, like, you know, the early childhood education, which would put some significant resources dedicated to it, it makes, at some point, it thinks makes sense to have a dedicated focus, because you can only deal with so much in, you know, in these bigger meetings. You need groups to kind of drill deeper, and so I, in terms of process, you know, is the affordable housing issue at that level, and should that be part of, you know, part of what we look at? And we could, you know, so let's at least look at that and, and, you know...
Yeah, I agree.
See if that's something, we might, maybe we try it out for a while and see how it works and evaluate it. Any other thoughts on this before we, we move on to the next item? Okay. Thank you all for being with us tonight. We'll be talking to you again shortly. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Um, this is, we, we identified this as the time when we're going to go ahead and hold a closed session to speak with Ron Payne or outside the council. So, um, can someone help us out with the specific citation we need to point to for this?
Yes, we need a motion and a vote to enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege. Um, and the matter that will be discussed is the County of Buncombe versus Wanda Skellington-Green, Amanda Louise Stone, John Creighton, and Joe Wiseman, cited at 18 CVS 4206.
Is there a motion to go into closed session for that process?
So move.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will adjourn back into open session, and we may take action on this item.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit. I don't know. I could have got that shit.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're back in open session. I'd like to ask Buncombe County outside council Ron Payne to join us and he's going to give a short presentation about a proposed legal settlement involving the civil lawsuit that the county is involved in against some former county employees.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, it's my pleasure to be here this evening. We have been in negotiations with John Creighton's attorney and I'm here this evening to recommend that the commission approve a settlement with Mr. Creighton. If you approve it, this will be a limited release only for the matters which we're aware. Should other matters arise, we would be free to pursue civil litigation if we so choose. The amount of settlement with Mr. Creighton would be $189,000. This would, as best I can determine, make the county whole for the matters that we could recover in a lawsuit against Mr. Creighton. And I've spoken as attorney, we would anticipate receiving those funds certainly by the end of the month and hopefully we will receive Ms. Green's monies as soon as the federal probation officers approve it because she is prohibited from entering into a financial transaction of $10,000 or more unless approved by her probation officer. Her attorney has told me he has initiated that process and hopefully we're going to get an answer on that perhaps as early as this week and those monies hopefully will be in the county coffers by the end of January also. It is my recommendation that the board approve this settlement and I will then draft the appropriate papers to document that.
Chairman, I would move approval.
I'll second it.
All right, there's a motion and second to approve a settlement totaling $189,000 for a limited release based on known legal claims the county has made in our civil suit against John Creighton. Further discussion? Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? Before we vote, I just would just note, obviously there's been other recent developments in the same civil lawsuit, so if my math is correct, I believe with this settlement, the county will have recovered approximately $3,660,000 from the suit, including the Wanda Green, the insurance settlement, and the Michael Green settlement in this settlement.
It'll be slightly over $3,670,000.
$67,000, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, thank you, Mr. Payne. Please keep us posted, thank you. All right. Okay, next up on the agenda is consideration of a land conservation advisory board recommendation for the Moose-Wilshire Stream Restoration Easement. And we have Nate Pennington to talk to us about this. And are you going to, we have two conservation easement items, but these will be separate presentations. You'll do this one first and then the one on the Wells King Bottomlands property.
That's correct, Mr. Chair, commission members, members of the public. My name is Nathan Pennington, your planning director. At this time though, I'd like to present staff member Gillian Phillips. She's one of our senior staff planners. She'll be presenting both items. One is a stream restoration easement and the other is a conservation easement. And there are two groups involved, so each one will be a separate presentation. That being said, Ms. Phillips will give the presentations.
All right, Gillian, welcome. Thank you.
So, we have two easements and just a note, the Wells King Bottomlands Conservation Easement on the agenda, it said it was recommended by AL Cab. It was actually recommended by the Ag Advisory Board, so just to note that. But the first one up is the Moose-Wilshire Stream Restoration Project. And this is a request from Riverlink in the amount of $13,200 for transaction fees to establish a conservation easement as part of a larger stream restoration project funded by a Clean Water Management Trust Fund grant. It was reviewed and recommended by the Land Conservation Advisory Board at their November meeting. And riparian areas are one of the areas designated as a conservation focus area by the Land Conservation Advisory Board. So the easement would be 3.6 acres and the full cost of the easement is being donated by three separate property owners, Mark and Melina Robertson, Bruce and Rachel Jensen, and Shelby Gibson. The property is within the city of Asheville. And just for a little location context, it is where the Old Moose Lodge is, near New Lester Highway. And there are tentative plans to turn that Old Moose Lodge into a brewery. The stream restoration project itself would restore 1,600 linear feet of degraded creek and the total project cost of the stream restoration would be $445,852. So this is obviously in the Smith Mill Creek watershed and in a collaboration between the city of Asheville, Riverlink, and NCDOT with Clean Water Management Trust Fund money, they did a, it was studied under the Smith Mill Creek Nine Element Watershed Plan. And this plan identified opportunities to address water quality issues and created conceptual designs for key projects. So these are just pictures of the current condition of the stream within the easement area. It just shows some of the erosion in the area. Usually for conservation easements, we're showing pretty pictures. This is sort of the before picture. And after the easement is established, which would include a 50-foot wide riparian buffer that would be planted, it would help stabilize the stream bank, filter pollutants from runoff, and provide wildlife habitat. So for the investment of Buncombe County for transaction fees would be $13,200. Again, the three landowners are donating the value of their easement, so that value that they're donating is $258,664. And then that grant from Clean Water Management Trust Fund is $445,825,000. So the actual cost to establish the easement is $48,573. So for that $13,200 investment by the county, it will leverage an additional $481,198 in funds for the restoration project and the establishment of the easement. And that would not include that value since the property owners are donating that money, or donating that value. And I just want to let the board know that we have Garrett Arts, who's the executive director of Riverlink here, he submitted, his, Riverlink submitted the easement. And then we also have Bob Gale and Joel Mizellis, who are AL Cab members to support the easement here. Any questions about that one?
I've got some comments. Chairman, could I ask to hear Garrett Arts' position on this?
I've known him for a little while, but I'd like to have...
I don't think we can put people under... We can't coerce...
Can't coerce him, eh?
We can ask people to talk to us.
That's why we...
I'm sure he'd be happy to.
So... So I've got a couple of questions. One is, I want to know what riparian is.
Sure.
What that means. The second thing is, why this quarter-mile of stream when there's so many other places? And exactly what is this going to look like when we're done? So that's the questions I have.
Sure. Riparian just means it's in the vicinity of water, running water.
Thank you.
In this case, it's Smith Mill Creek. Smith Mill Creek happens to be one of the most polluted streams in Buncombe County. There's two problems with the stream. One was covered a couple of days ago in the Answer Man column, Patton Avenue floods. So quantity is an issue. And then the quality of the water is the other issue. This is a highly urbanized environment. It's basically the stream parallels Patton Avenue. And that, as you might imagine, does not have much in the way of what we like to see, which is pervious surfaces. The ground is one of our best filters for water. And when we pave over it or put large rooftops over it, that water comes off fast, and it also brings along everything that's on the road. So why is this spot important? In 20... We're pretty fortunate in North Carolina. We have the North Carolina Clean Water Management Trust Fund. This is not federal funding. This is through the governor and the legislature. The governor's office administers the funds, and the legislature provides them. This is unique. You won't find it when you go across any of our borders here in our neighboring states. And it allows us to make some pretty significant investments in clean water. In this particular case, it is a... A couple of years ago, Clean Water Management Trust Fund themselves had given us funding for a nine-element watershed plan in this area. It's roughly a six-mile, square-mile watershed. And again, highly polluted. What they do, the engineer goes out and looks at both those quantity and quality issues. There's dozens of them. You can find it online. But in this particular case, this is one of the top projects that the engineer had identified as making an investment in those two issues, the quality and the quantity issue. And so, very small investment. We've already been awarded the funding for Clean Water Management Trust Fund. That's about $425,000. We have a private donor, and these private landowners giving us the other pieces. So for 3%, this is part of the match, of a 20% match that we'll be giving to Clean Water Management Trust Fund. With Riverlink and some of the other organizations involved in this, that doesn't mean you're handing them all 20% of those dollars. Sometimes, they're allowing us to use our community to go out and do projects with our volunteers. We convert that into dollars for their satisfaction. But those hours of volunteer work is then converted over to take care of the stream restoration. So we appreciate your consideration. And we have a couple of Land Conservation Advisory Board members here this evening. These are budgeted funds, I believe, from this budget cycle for these purposes. And clean water is a center of a whole lot of things in our community.
I want to thank you for your answer. And Chairman, I'll move approval.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any public comment on the motion? Further discussion? Before we vote, just one thing I would like to... A lot of great things about this project. One, though, just I think we should note when we consider these... So the landowners are donating the value of this easement. The market value of that is a quarter... It's over a quarter of a million dollars. So we should, as a community, say thank you to these landowners who are voluntarily giving away, you know, significant part of... They were just interested in just maximizing the value of that land. They'd be... They'd have a lot of other options. So it's a very forward-looking and generous act these landowners are making. So thank you to them. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we've got one more. Yes, sir.
I'm looking down here in new business. We have two of our staff still sitting in the back. It's been here all evening. One of them gets early in the morning and goes down to the landfill. They need to be brought forward before going to the other side.
We're going to... This one's just going to take a minute, and then I think we're into new business.
Do them first.
We've got one more.
We've got one more, and then we're into new business.
I'll be fast.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So the second request for funds is the Wells Kings Bottomlands Conservation Easement. And it was actually, again, agriculture advisory... Buncombe County Agriculture Advisory Board. And it's a... Max, can you put the presentation up? Thank you. And these are much prettier pictures. It was recommended by the Ag Advisory Board in February 2018. And we have Jess Loggus, who is the Farmland Protection Director with the Southern Appalachian Highland Conservancy. And they are the agency who requested the funds. And they are requesting $50,000 in transaction costs. It's actually two separate parcels and owners. It's the Wells family and the King family. It's going to be 166 acres total. All the parcels are in the voluntary ag district. It's 91 acres of pasture, 36 acres of cropland, 34 acres of woodland, and five acres of wetland. And just to give you a little history of the property and the families. So the first one, Sandra King. So Sandra King has been the... Was the person who initiated the conservation of this 86 acres. She is part of the Ferguson family. And they have been in the Sandy Mush community for a very long time, and at one time owned hundreds of acres. And she took it upon herself, because she had seen over the years land be passed down to numerous heirs and be parceled out. So she took it as a goal upon herself to protect this 86-acre farm. Sadly, Ms. King has passed away. But her relatives, including her husband and children, are committed to seeing this land protected as she wanted it to be. So approximately 80% of this parcel is in active agricultural use, including beef cattle production. And her son, Tim King, actually owns an adjacent farming tract and is in the process of initiating a conservation easement on his property after seeing what his mother has done or wanted to do. And if that one is established along with these two that are requesting funding now, it would be a 326-acre block of continuous protected farmland in Sandy Mush. So the second parcel is the Aubrey and Rita Wells parcel, and it's 84 acres. And it is adjacent to the Sandra King property. It is one of the few remaining dairy operations in the county. The Wells have actually leased the property from the Sylvester family for over 20 years. And the Sylvester family is related to the Ferguson family. And the Sylvester family, when they decided to sell their property, they gave the Wells the first opportunity to purchase it. And they sort of created a unique model for transfer of this land. So the family has entered into a five-year, interest-free purchase contract in which the Wells family will pay the Sylvester family for the land once they receive payment from Southern Appalachian Thailand Conservancy for their easement. And this parcel, approximately 75% of the parcel is in active agricultural use. The tract that they are conserving is vital to the dairy operation. The Wells currently milk between 125 and 150 cows and keep an additional 300 cows. And the tract is also part of the Buncombe County Farm Heritage Trail. So the fee simple value of these two properties combined is $1,589,84. So for Aubrey and Rita Wells funding, $280,000 is coming from a USDA grant. $140,000 is coming from a private donor. $140,000 is a value that the landowner is giving up for that conservation easement. $25,500 is coming for a private donor for part of the transaction costs. And then $25,000 is being requested for transaction fees from Buncombe County. So the county can leverage $585,500 by investing $25,000. That's 4% of the project. So the Sandra King funding, $273,333 is coming from a USDA grant. $136,667 is coming from a private donor. Again, the landowner is donating some of that value of that easement, $136,667. $25,500 is also coming from a private donor for transaction costs. And then they're requesting that $25,000 from Buncombe County for transaction costs. So again, county can leverage $572,167,000 by investing $25,000 or 4% of the project. So for both projects, you're looking at a value of $1,157,667 for a $50,000 investment by the county.
Great, thank you so much. Any discussion, or is there a motion?
Second.
Are there any public comments on the motion? Further discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you to everyone involved in these projects. I know all these projects take a long time to plan. But these are really important to preserve these really special places in Buncombe County. So thanks to everyone who's involved in it. All right. Next up, we don't have any public hearings. George Jipney, county manager, report. Okay. All right. Under new business, we have a resolution to approve an interlocal agreement with the town of Black Mountain for funding of Riverwalk.
The one that Mike wanted to move up.
I'm not sure... I'm not sure. Look, all of these have county staff involved, right? So let's just take them in the order that they're on the agenda. Hey, Josh.
Good evening. So just to briefly orient you to what you have before you, this is a resolution for us to pass funding for the... For an STBG or a Surface Transportation Block Grant match that the town of Black Mountain needs to continue its Riverwalk Greenway. Our commitment to the project would be limited to $400,000, spread out over the next three years. And you originally committed the money that this MOU transfers during the June 19, 2018, meeting. So this is not allocating any more funding than you've already allocated to date. This will just provide us with a guaranteed return on our investment as we pass that funding to Black Mountain. So with that, I can entertain any questions.
I do have a question. Are we fully committed to the $400,000? Because when I'm looking at page two, response to, it says we intend to pay $133,000. Is there a reason we're using the verbiage "intends to pay" over the next three years?
Sure. For commitments like this, we forecast our commitment, but we don't fully commit until the budget year of. And so we've committed for fiscal year 2018, 2019, and we'll need to take further action in subsequent years and that'll be part of this year's budgeting process.
So you'll bring us another resolution back for that next phase, right?
It'll be incorporated into the annual budget. It'll be part of your approvals there.
So in essence, it's not a legally binding requirement, but it's expressing the full intention. We're basically giving them our word that we plan to do this.
Correct. And this is similar to the mechanism that we've used with the town of Woodfin, although we're taking on less responsibility with this project, and the town of Black Mountain is going to take the project forward.
Good question. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Second.
Second.
Any members of the public who wish to comment on the proposal? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, it's a resolution declining the purchase of surplus property from Buncombe County Board of Education and approving a sublease of that property. And I believe Mike Free's going to present this.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I'm not sure if our IT folk will be able to pull up a couple of images that we included with the agenda packet. Yes, we can. Yep. You see the site... This is a Google Earth image of the new INCA Intermediate School. And if you... Cassie, if you can go to the next one. Well, that didn't work out very well. Go back to the one you were just on. You see on the left-hand side of the image there, it looks like a baseball field outfield next to Jacob Holm Way and above Asheville Commerce Park. What this resolution asks is that, since the county owns this property now, the whole INCA Intermediate School site for financing purposes, the county and the county school board have been working with INCA Fire Department to locate a new substation in that area in the corner of Jacob Holm Way, the southwest corner of Jacob Holm Way and Asheville Commerce Park. So to make this happen, the school board must by law offer the property to the county to accept a decline of surplus property. The school board, by attached resolution, asked that the county decline to accept that offer. And the school board also asked that we authorize the school board to sublease the property to INCA Fire Department for their substation. So our involvement there was to make sure that the sublease would not allow the INCA Fire Department, for any reason, to use that property as collateral for its construction process, and that sublease does accomplish it. It's a long-term lease in 99 years, I believe, for that project.
Very good. Any questions? Or is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve.
Second.
All right. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the proposed resolution? Further discussion amongst the board members? Any questions? And the reason... Just one... I have one question. Just the reason the county owns the property is because we financed it. So we have a lien on the property during the period of the financing, which is necessary since we're funding the project. Is that right?
That's essentially correct. Yes, sir.
All right. You all right? Okay. Now, the motion is to approve this project, approve the resolution. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And finally, we have a resolution approving the release of a request for proposals for the next residential solid waste and recyclables collection franchise. And Dane Peterson is going to help us out on this item.
All right. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Dane Peterson, and I'm representing our solid waste department this evening. And I'm here to ask board's approval to begin to advertise a request for proposals for residential waste and recycling collections in the unincorporated areas of Buncombe County. In 2010, the current exclusive franchise contract was initiated, and this was a 10-year term. So the current contract is set to expire December 31 of 2019 of this year. And as you know, Waste Pro is the service provider for this contract. The proposed RFP document was included in this evening's agenda for your review as well as a resolution that will allow us to move forward in soliciting proposals for this scope of services. And we, staff, fully understand the importance and the magnitude that this service contract means for our communities and our citizens. And we have involved multiple departments in the development of this RFP document. And at this time, I'd like to thank our solid waste leadership team, county manager's office, performance management, intergovernmental relations, finance department, legal department, and tax department for all the efforts and resources that were used to create the framework for this RFP. We have worked to evaluate and incorporate... We have worked to evaluate and incorporate best management practices for residential collection services and have also worked to benchmark other local governments that have recently issued contracts similar to this type of, of service. The proposed base term for the new contract will be five years with the option of two two-year extensions. And the new contract start date will be January 2000, January 1, 2020. And we do not anticipate any lapse in services as we transition the new, the existing contract to the new contract. The bid structure for the RFP requires that contractors bid on two separate models. And the, the models that we're requiring contractors to propose to are the subscriber-based model and the comprehensive unincorporated household model. The subscriber model is our current structure where citizens in unincorporated Buncombe have the option to subscribe to the franchise collector's services. And they also have the option to self-haul their waste and recycling materials to a permitted convenience center in the county. We have control over the Buncombe County transfer station and Buncombe County landfill convenience sites. And there's also a recycling convenience center in Woodfin operated by Curbside Management. So that's the subscriber-based model. The other model is the comprehensive model. And this, this basically includes in the scope of services all of the single-family residential parcels in unincorporated Buncombe. And in our communications with haulers involved in the industry and other local governments, we certainly feel that this option provides gains and efficiencies and as well as can translate to savings in a per household unit cost. So that's, that's, that's why we structured it that way, so that we can provide this board with comparisons in costs as we evaluate their proposals. We have also provided an option within the RFP for bidders to propose ideas or methods that may be outside of the provided bid structure. And that's in efforts to, you know, allow contractor creativity and flexibility with the proposals. And if there's a, if there's a silver bullet out there that the, the private companies know about, we, we want to know about it, and we want to be able to evaluate that. And, and I will tell you that we own the fact that the existing contract does not have sufficient performance regulation measures within it. And, and we have worked to address that through the RFP language. And we will incorporate firm penalties associated in the new contract with, if there is an issue with contractor non-compliance with performance standards. And we have also, we're going to incorporate in the new contract the fact that a performance bond must be carried in effect throughout the duration of the contract, where previously and currently, the performance bond was, was not required past the second year of the contract term. We have also worked to incentivize proposals that will incorporate alternate fuel, powered service vehicles, as well as automated collection fleet. An example of alternate fuel-driven vehicles would be a compressed natural gas or CNG-driven vehicles, which we're seeing an upward trend in the, in the industry now with the amount of CNG vehicles. And an example of automated collection vehicle would be similar to what the city of Asheville uses, the, the side loaders or the one-armed bandits that are, where the control functions are shifted to the, the cab of the vehicle. And we, we feel like that's, that's certainly a safer operation and can be more efficient when you remove the slinger from the back of the vehicle. It's, it's, it's not, we can't, it, it's hard for our market and the geography to say that we can use that everywhere, but we want to see that increase because we feel like it is safer and more efficient for, for our citizens and the workers. Pending board approval this evening, the RFP advertisement period will begin this Friday, January 18. And the, the deadline to submit proposals will be March 1, 2019. And at that time, we will begin the submittal evaluation process. The scoring of the proposals will be accomplished by an evaluation committee. And the, the scoring sheet that committee members will use has been included within the RFP so that, that interested firms have a good understanding of how we're going to score proposals. And please, please also note that these proposed dates do meet and exceed the solid, our solid waste ordinances requirements for soliciting and awarding a new franchise contract. And our, for the timeframe that we structured, we wanted to make sure that we had, or provided enough time on the front end for vendors to submit sound proposals. But also, when a new contract is awarded on the back end, provide enough time for them to, you know, there's, there's a lot of moving parts with that, the, the necessary equipment, staffing, and, and just making sure that they're fully ready to start work in January 1, 2020. So we are, we are certainly excited to get the, the ball rolling on this process. And I appreciate your time this evening, and I'll try to answer any questions you may have at this time.
All right, there's a motion in a second. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the proposal? All right, bring back the position. I, I do have, I do have one question. You know, as we think about the next franchise and different ways to make sure that whoever we contract with, that it's a, you know, they perform well. So the proposal, the proposal is to go out for contracts, two different modes of operation, you know, one kind of status quo, the other, if there's mandatory participation, comprehensive participation. But they're, they're all countywide, right? You know, one of the ideas, I think, maybe, George, you may have mentioned this, when we were kind of talking about this informally, about looking at maybe having more than one franchise for different, different parts of the county. What are the, could you comment on that? Yeah.
But I think the general consensus was we would be better off to have one large franchise and cover. And it, and it, I want to stress, it does not cover the incorporated areas because they typically provide their service or have a different franchise. This is for the unincorporated area.
And that the, the benefits of the economies of scale are going to be a better value.
That's right. And so with that, what we would end up with is a total of about 53,000 households. So when we looked at that number, we felt like it was better just to keep it with one contractor.
And I will speak to the fact that, you know, this is the fifth most dangerous industry in our nation. And as far as safety purposes goes, efficiency-wise, it's, it's more efficient to have and safer to have less collection vehicles on the road to service these accounts. That's certainly something we look, there was 30 fatalities in the industry in 2017. So those are certainly parameters that we looked at. And when we measured and evaluated that, like I said, the less collection vehicles on the road, infrastructure, safety of our citizens, safety of the workers, were certainly factors that we looked at.
Right. I mean, part of, part of, that, that all makes sense. I mean, part of the, you know, kind of a appeal of the idea of having more than one would be if one was really failing to perform, that it might be more feasible to actually terminate a contract. Whereas if you're all in with one company, it's kind of impossible, very challenging to get out of it. But I understand the financial protections you're talking about building into this one.
Yeah, we addressed that issue about having the performance bond remain in place. So if we had to get rid of somebody, and because of non-performance and everything, then it took us six months to get someone else in. We would, we would contract with them, and then we would grab his performance bond and pay for it that way, fight him in court with the performance bond.
Do you, do you think that if we did need to terminate a contract as we think about a new franchise, I mean, if a company's really failing to perform, not, and, and we don't think it's going to get better, that it is realistic that, that it can be terminated and having another company brought in during the term of the franchise? Have you seen examples of that, George, in your experience?
Yeah, you can do that, and that's why we put it in that way. And the other thing is, it won't be a surprise because we will have a documentation that we had popped this guy with penalties. And we'll have a written record of poor performance. So if he wants to go to court with that, we'd be more than happy to go to court that way. It'll be documented that he has not performed. We've had to hit him with fines, preparing to perform the job, and therefore we're entitled to this contract.
I think it sounds like George has done that before. So I, and I apologize if this question was, was already asked, but what, I'm assuming there's provision in there for somebody low bidding this and then coming back and asking us for more money quickly. Can you speak to that?
There, there is specific language in the ordinance regarding the, the fee structure. And a lot of that information is pertaining to CPI increases. And we're, we're somewhat protected over the first two years of the contract based on the CPI increase. And, you know, approximately the 5% mark is when that triggers an adjustment on the CPI based on the ordinance now. You know, I feel like the language that's in the ordinance certainly helps us to restrict, you know, a vendor coming in and saying, look, this is, you know, we're bidding this low, and we're going to come back and ask for more money.
Yeah.
Because we have, you know, I can think of at least three locations within the RFP that we have stipulated that just because this is the low-cost provider or low-cost proposal, that does not guarantee that the, that that proposal will be awarded the contract. Because that's, that's what we're evaluating for. Price is certainly important, and it is certainly something that we, we consider heavily. That's, that's a very important part of the proposal. But what we, what our evaluation committee scores as far as the overall service that's going to provide the, the most consistent and, you know, high level of service, that, that's how we're going to award this contract.
That's a good answer. Thanks.
Joe, last year's point about, y'all, y'all probably know this, but a performance tenant, you have to accept a low bid unless you have a legitimate reason not to take it. A request for proposals allows us to evaluate qualitative differences. And obviously, one of the main things we're going to look at is what's their performance been in other organizations? And we'll be asking for references that we can check on that, as to how well they've done in other countries. Oh, yes. So as Dane said, we'll be looking at all of that. Do they have sufficient equipment and manpower, you know, to meet their obligations every day and that sort of thing? What's their financial condition? You know, because obviously, we want to go with a company that's strong enough that if they have to provide additional equipment or manpower, that they're in a position financially to do that.
Okay, thanks.
All right. We have a motion in a second to begin this RFP process. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thanks, Dane.
Thank you very much.
All right. We now come to the public comment. I'm sorry, we're not quite there yet. We've got board appointments, we've got the audit committee, we've got three reappointments. Lamar, I just had one question on this, just, and I'm sorry, I didn't think of it till just now. On these, these members, none of them would be going beyond their second term on the board. Do you know that?
I am not sure, but I can find that out.
Or does anybody know? Terry, do you know?
They won't be.
Okay. This will be their second term?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to check that. I was looking through some other stuff, and it just, it just made me think about this one. All right. Very good. Is there a motion on these reappointments?
I so moved. Second.
All right, there's a motion in a second to reappoint Danny Yelton, Mike Nept shield, and Larry Harris. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. And then the final item on board appointments deals with board and commission appointments, where commissioners are liaisons or members to these different boards. So everyone should have a, it's on the link as well as maybe have a printout of it. The positions in, highlighted in yellow are the positions where the terms are, you know, are, are up now. But we just listed all of them, just so folks could see all the different boards that are out there. So, so of course, Ellen Frost was, Ellen Frost was serving on the Health and Human Services Board, so that's one that we need to take, take action on.
I have a motion for that board.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Amanda.
Commissioner Amanda.
Yeah.
All right. I second that motion.
You're welcome. My voice is going, I apologize.
He's being very efficient because he's losing his voice. All right, so we have a motion for Amanda Edwards for the
The queue, sorry.
Health and Human Services Board. Are there any other folks interested in that one? All right, all in favor of appointing Amanda Edwards to the Health and Human Services Board? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Are there any other?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm on five boards, I think. Myself and Commissioner Whiteside's both got five. I have had, and it's not fair to the land of the sky, I've missed numerous, nine in a row, to tell you the truth. And I would like to be taken off of that one.
All right. Are there any other boards that folks are serving on that they would, you know, choose not, continue serving on?
And I would be an alternate on that if someone would.
Okay.
It's actually not listed here, but I've been serving on the CCPT, CFPT board. It's not required a commissioner be on that. I'm going to be cycling off of that because of other commitments on here. But if anyone was interested in doing that, I think the board itself could, it was like a sort of at-will position. Anyway, just flagging that, that I'll be cycling off that.
Okay, what's all that stand for?
Yep. That's the Community Child Protection Team and the Child Fatality Review Team.
Well done.
So, yes, so it was an honor to serve there two years, and if anyone's interested, I'd be happy to talk with them about it.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Crime Stopper Board?
Yeah.
12, 12, 9, 18 is my last date. So I'll go back on it. I mean, it's just.
You'll serve another term?
One time, yeah.
Okay. So why don't we, that's, that sounds good. Why don't we go through these, and on the ones where there's reappointments, so we'll get to Land of the Sky, we'll talk about that some more and see if somebody else wants to do that. Well, let's just, actually, why don't we just see on that, is anybody, is anybody interested in serving on the Land of the Sky that we may not have had a chance to think about it? So if there's not, we'll just automatically, there, we can talk about it some more. But anybody else interested in that?
Let's open up Crime Stoppers, too.
Or Crime Stoppers. Okay. Well, this, the, the point of the discussion tonight was to sort of just have a conversation about to see who's interested in different ones, so we don't have to make all these decisions tonight.
That's good.
So why don't we just keep the Crime Stoppers and the Land of the Sky? We'll hold on those, we'll have some more discussion about that, bring those back.
I do have a question on that.
Yeah.
And you may or may not know. Robert, when do they meet, Land of the Sky Regional Council?
It is Thursdays now.
What's a month?
Yeah.
What about crime?
It's last, the fourth, no, it may be Wednesday. It was interfering with my MSD.
Oh, so Wednesday?
Yeah, but it has later been changed, so it's just been a big conflict, and I don't think it's fair not having so.
Yeah, I was just trying to remember when it was. What about Crime Stoppers? Mike, do you remember? When, when they meet?
When do they meet?
Does it remember?
I don't know.
Okay. Lamar, if you could put that on the information next time, that'd be awesome.
I don't think they meet that often.
When they meet? That helps.
Okay, we'll circulate that.
I'll actually send it before the meeting so you can have a, a chance to see those meeting dates.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's a really good chart there, the way you've done that. I mean, I think it'd be pretty easy to include in that when they meet.
I can do that. Stacy Woody actually put the chart together, so I'll give her credit for that, so.
Well, good. Good. Tell her how to call her.
Are there any other comments on any of the other boards and commissions? All right, if there's not, then.
I have one.
Go ahead.
So I'm going to make a motion for Al Whiteside to continue on the EDC, because it looks like he was up in 12, 9, 2018. You still want to do that, Commissioner?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's just go through these and do, do the rest of them.
Okay, yeah, we might as well.
All right. I'm serving on the Energy Innovation Task Force, and I'd like to keep doing that. I think this is a board where we're probably going to I think this is a board where we're probably going to, there's been discussions on that board about reconstituting the overall makeup of it. It's been working for about three years, I think, or thereabout. So I think that this is one, there'll probably be some other changes on it coming forward, but I'm definitely interested in continuing to serve on it, so.
So Chairman, let me ask you a question on that.
Yeah.
Okay, so does it make sense to, I mean, you've made a major commitment to that, and I don't think I really want to make the same commitment that you're making, but I wouldn't mind serving on that for a period of time. I mean, is there a way to, I guess I could come to the sessions, but is there a way to do an alternate, you know, for that? Because I would, I mean, I wouldn't mind attending, I wouldn't mind attending that.
Yeah, absolutely. And well, the meeting, so the meeting, I mean, I guess, all these meetings are open, of course, they're open. I'm sure the task force would welcome, you know, seeing other commissioners there and participating. This is kind of a unique board in that it is jointly appointed between us and the city. So if we're going to, if we're going to make changes to the bylaws of it, if I'm using the right term, we would need to do it jointly, so to like formally create alternate positions and things like that.
Okay.
But I think it's an interesting, an interesting idea. I'd certainly be very, very open to that.
So why don't we, I'm like, Joe, want to check with him and see if there's a possibility to have an alternate that could...
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Because we have, you know, there's...
Well, okay, you want to stay on that, right, Brown?
Yeah, I'd like to keep serving.
Well, I make the motion that you stay on there, and then we can, well, do we have a second?
Second.
Sure.
And then we can look into having an alternate on there. You get with the group.
Yeah.
So that, yeah, Joe can do it.
How often y'all meet, Brown?
I've been meeting once a month. Those meetings have been, have gone to like every other month in some cases. There's, so it's not every month that the group meets now, because it's kind of, you know, early on, it was a new thing, and there was a lot of planning going on, so now it's not every month, it's usually every other month.
I would like to get an update on the next one, because I would like to sit in, and I think a lot of the commissioners would like to sit occasionally in.
That sounds great.
A lot of money.
That sounds great. All right, that sounds great. Well, you know, the other thing, you know, Robert, you raise a good point in terms of, you know, some of these different boards, we do get updates on fairly regularly, you know, the School Capital Fund Commission, of course, and others, but we might want to, you know, we might want to think about getting presentations from some of these other boards throughout the year to kind of hear updates on what they're...
Good idea.
What they're up to, but I'm sure the Energy Innovation Task Force would like to do that. There's a lot of good work going on there.
Yeah, it would be good.
All right, there is a motion in a second. Further discussion on this one? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, and I'll report back. Want to talk to those folks about some of the suggestions. All right, we've done Health and Human Services, we've talked about Land of Sky, we're going to bring that one back, and we have the Riverfront Redevelopment Commission, and Mr. Whiteside's is serving there now, and I believe he's willing to continue serving.
Yeah, nobody else wants to. Yeah, I'll stay on there.
Anybody else interested in that one? Okay. Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you for serving there, Mr. Whiteside. All right, I believe those were all the ones that we highlighted for discussion tonight.
Everybody else, so.
All right, so I think we're, I think we're good on this.
Land of Sky, we're going to...
We're going to, we're going to bring that, we're going to, I think, I just, I'd like to ask everyone to think about that, both Land of Sky and Crime Stoppers, and if you're interested, learn a little bit more about when they meet, how often they meet, and we're going to bring those back, because we do need to have commissioners appointed to those, but we don't have to do that tonight. So we'll bring them back.
Land of Sky, the next one's the 23rd, and they're going through the transaction of the director there, so, yeah, I think it's going to be a lot better with Larry Harris there.
Yeah. All right. Great, so there's a lot going on there. All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Now we do come to public comment. Yes, sir. So there's, if you would like to make a public comment, please join us at the podium. You'll have three minutes, just share your name and where you live, and thank you for being here.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Welcome, Commissioner Edwards. My name is Michael Harney. I've come before you, and it's always my honor to do so, and it's apropos today, the very day that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born 90 years ago. So I work at the Western North Carolina AIDS Project, I'm a prevention educator there. I also teach Spanish at AB Tech and at Blue Ridge Community Colleges, and thus, I'm not always able to make your meetings because I maximize my income by teaching Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday evenings and Friday mornings. I wanted to update you on the Needle Exchange Program of Asheville. We have a colleague who's now working in Macon County in Franklin. She's doing some of the Needle Exchange out in the western part of this region, but in total, in 2018, we went through 472,873 needles. I like to also mention, and apropos to this day, my first colleague and mentor and boss was Marty Prairie Chicken. He also was born on this day in 1958, so would have been 61 years of age had he lived to this day. Back in the 1990s, 1994, when we implemented Needle Exchange here in the Asheville and Buncombe County area, if we ever went through 1,000 needles in a whole year, we thought that was pretty hot snot, as I would say, but to have gone through over 470,000 needles in one year, I must tell you that we are at about week two into each month, still running out of supplies. I am encouraged that the Buncombe County Department of Health and Human Services, the Health Director, the Medical Director are looking at the logistical ways of implementing Needle Exchange here in our county as a model that I believe could prevent HIV infections, unnecessary viral hepatitis infections, endocarditis that is eating up the budgets at our hospital systems, and other bloodborne pathogen infections, including some abscesses. I'm encouraged that they are working toward this. I'm also encouraged by the election of our new sheriff, Quentin Miller, who has indicated to me that he has interest in working, as did Sheriff Van Duncan, with people who need access to clean sterile injection equipment to reduce their risks, to see that we really are all drug users. I know some of you are probably hoping to get out of this meeting as soon as possible to go have a drink of alcohol. Some of you may be using tobacco products in different ways. I like coffee in the evening, not in the morning. So we really are all drug users. If we could reduce the stigma and reduce the discrimination around people who ingest drugs through the injection of them, I think that we would reduce some stigma, discrimination, and to help better our healthcare systems and the cost to those. That's kind of my update to you. I hope to see you again soon. I look forward to working with you in the community as many ways that we can. On a completely side note, I hope that the Buncombe County Commissioners would consider ways of getting more solar panels on buildings that are public buildings, office buildings, things that you are financing, including maybe even encouraging businesses, private businesses, Walmart tops and Ingalls to put solar panels there to reduce our need for those otherwise fossil fuels. Thank you so very much.
All right, thank you, Michael. Anyone else? All right, we are going to have a closed session to discuss a personnel item.
We need a motion to...
Need a motion to enter into closed session under General Statute 143-31811A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee.
All right, and this is in regards to our search for new county manager position. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move to go into closed session.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We do not expect to make any decisions when we come back out. We plan to just adjourn.